You know when Al had his feet up on the desk and he was using it on the phone, there was going to be a problem later. He was like, "What are you agreeing to?"
I was working on change.
He's a dealmaker. He misses all the time. He should be like that.
The stuff he would say, I'm like sitting in the lab like, you know, you can't negotiate. But he was just breaking the job of the bar.
Yeah, yeah, don't worry about that. We'll make it happen. I'm going, uh...
Yeah, I'm about to retire.
I'm pretty sure they're...
I'm gonna sit down and call him out.
I'm told to verbally over the phone, they could like, do your thing, they could like, "Yeah, go ahead, you go."
And you didn't, you didn't do what you needed to do.
I'm told to verbally over the phone, they could like, do your thing, they could like, "Yeah, go ahead, you go."
And you didn't, you didn't do what you needed to do.
Okay, we're gonna start with calling to order our regular meeting for March 4th for Town of Gilbert Planning Commission. Could I get a roll call?
Chairman Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Vice Chairman Christopher Sipple.
Present.
Commissioner David Blazer.
Here.
Commissioner Carl Bloomfield.
Here.
Commissioner David Cavaney.
Here.
Commissioner Brett Moody.
Here.
Commissioner Jennifer Whitman.
Here.
Alternate Todd Hall.
Thank you. That brings us to the agenda for tonight. Do we have a motion or any...
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move to approve the agenda with the following changes, moving number eight, case Z14-27 to non-consent.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from the Vice Chairman Sipple and a second from Commissioner Whitman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven zero. At this time, we'd, time for communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters not on the agenda. The commission's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff for, to review a matter commented upon, or asking that the matter be put on a future agenda. Is there anybody I'd like to speak under these pretenses? Seeing none, we'll move forward to the consent agenda. The consent public hearing is items will be heard at one public hearing. After the consent public hearing, these items may be approved by one single motion. At the request of members of the commission or staff, an item may be removed from the consent calendar and may be heard and acted upon separately. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent hearing and approved under a single motion. The consent agenda items are S14-11 Brighton, a request to approve a plenary plat of an open space of 43 homes. Item number six, S14-13 Parcel 17A Cooley Station, request to approve plenary plat for Fulton Homes of 18 home lots. Item number seven, which is S15-01 Parcel 9 and 11 of Cooley Station, a request to approve plenary plat of, and open space for Fulton Homes of 649 home lots. And that's our items for the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chairman Sipple and a second from Chairman Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes seven zero. Oh, Commissioner Blazer. Sorry. I didn't, I didn't get to look at it this time. That brings us to our non-consent agenda. A non-consent public hearing items may be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon commissioned by a separate motion. During the public hearing, anyone who wishes to comment in support or in opposition to the public hearing items may do so. If you wish to comment upon a public hearing item, you may, you must fill out a public comment card, which is the green cards in the back, and if you would fill one out and bring it to the roundtable that we have up in front, and indicate the item number which you wish to speak to be heard on. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. So I'll open the public hearing and bring us to item number eight, which is Z14-27. And Bob Carmen.
Thank you, Chairman. As you recall, I addressed the planning commission about a month ago regarding this project. This is the enclave, which is requesting a reduction in side yard setbacks from, in respect to ordinance 2493. And I'm gonna quickly go through the presentation, because some of this you've heard already. The project is located at the northeast corner of Higley Road and Houston. It is approximately 12.6 acres, and from the aerial, you can see that this project has a history in that it had started construction but has since stopped. There was a previous approval for a 10-lot subdivision, and in the recent times, there was, in May, approval for a 20-lot subdivision, and also a changing, a rezone from S35 to S10 with a PAD. And there was, I'll go into the relief with those stipulations later in the presentation. But from the existing zoning, you can see that the property to the north is zoned RC, which is important because there is a requirement that was granted relief in that last ordinance that you are required to have, you are required, you are limited to single-story structures. In that last approval, it was granted relief that you would be able to have two-story structures along that lot. But we can see from the zoning that to the, to the west, it's SF6, to the south SF6, and there's also directly to the east SF10. So there's compatible zoning with this project. And I bring this up to your attention because they have similar side yard setbacks of top 5 and 10 feet within those communities. And those communities to the south are Durango 2, Kristen Manor, and to the west is Carriage Lane. Before you on the screen is the, what ordinance 2493 approved. What you'll see is that there's relief to side yard setbacks of 10 and 9 feet for lots 5 through 10, and then also 15 and 9 for the, for the lots adjacent to the arterial. And there is also rear yard setbacks of 30 and 40. And then again, on the screen, you can see the relief from that code 2.104B. But the matter at hand tonight is looking at the side yard setbacks. The table on the screen shows what is the side yard setbacks that are permissible in the LDC for this particular type of zoning, just 15 and 10. The ordinance 2493 gave relief to specific lots, and those are indicated in red. Those are five, lots 5 through 9 are 10 and 9 feet, and then lots 20 was 15 and 9. And on the far column, you'll see what is proposed. What they're proposing is to take one of those 10-foot permitted side yard setbacks and reduce that to 5 feet, along with lot 20, a reduction to 14 feet, which is along the arterial. Back in May, there was a plenary plat approval, and with this plating plat approval is that there was easements, drainage easements along the front setbacks, the front lots of these properties. I bring this up to your attention because what this does is move the building envelope behind those drainage easements. So by zone right, they have the ability to go to 30 feet, but due to these easements, they are set back actually 40 to 60 feet. And that, those are approximate distance. With that approval, there was a conceptual plan submitted, and this shows those drainage structures are retention in the front. And those are the structures, the structures along the front. And you can see that the setbacks are 40, you know, 60 feet. Set, the conceptual site plan also shows the setbacks of 10 feet and 5 between the units. So between each building, there will be 15 feet total, with those exceptions between 5 and 9 where there'll be 14 feet. And going through the requests, these are the requests for 10 and 5-foot setbacks. These are the lots that are affected. 2 through 4, lot 10, and then 11 through 19. These are the lots that are requests for the 9-foot and 5-foot setback, or rather, the 5-foot setback, and that's 5 through 9. And then, of course, the setbacks along the arterial of 15.5 and 14.5. Again, I just want to remind you, it's the request for 5-foot setbacks. Higley is indicated with the dash line, is the arterial, and there is a 25-foot open space between the arterial and the lots. This is important because when you look at lot 20, that the, the request for the reduction is to 14 feet. You may recall the discussion where the builder is able to place the, the building envelope on an angle so that only the back third encroaches into that 15-foot setback, and it's only 9 and 1/2 inches into that setback. So once again, you have 15 feet between the structures. The planning commission was concerned about the aesthetics and asked for a request for streetscapes. So this is using the building elevations that were provided to the town. These are currently scheduled to go through DRB next week as a standard plan. And you can see that there's a 5-foot, and this is how the 5-foot, 10-foot configuration works, again, for 20 feet. And just to give you an up-close look of what that configuration looks like. The zoning exhibit has been submitted. It shows the setbacks by lot. And as written in the staff report, the developer is concerned about the integrity of the subdivision. They are going to give relief, give back to the town that they don't need the two, the second-story living, the two-story. So this is all gonna be a single-story subdivision, which is also important, important aspect, as I wrote in the staff report, is that as a single-story subdivision, in these increased setbacks where the building envelopes are 60 feet, you don't have your building bulk close to the street. You don't have that two-story feeling as you will have in other subdivisions. It's set back. You have that distance in the viewpoint. And for these reasons, staff is recommending approval for this project.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from staff at this time? No. Vice Chairman Sipple?
Bob, real quick, front yard between 40 and 70? I'm trying to see that in the report. Oh, okay. I got it.
Sean will take.
I got it. Yep.
All right, thank you. And is the applicant step up and name and town or city of residence?
Give us a second while we get set up. Sean Lake, 1744 South Valvista Drive, here on behalf of Cahov Nanian Homes and the property owner in connection with this project. It's, uh, it's fun to be here about, with this project. Oftentimes, I'm here asking or begging for more density, or smaller lots, or a lot of things. I've got a room full of neighbors, and in this case, I don't have any of that. It's a great project, not that those others aren't, but this is really a project that's, I'm really impressed with and is gonna turn out and look really, really nice. I started knowing about this project... Here, go right here. It should pop up.
Hi, T., can we get some help?
Yeah, it's, it's plugged in. We just have a blue screen. There we go.
Got on one screen. We're halfway there.
Or they did something. We're at F5. There we go. So I started, I learned about this project probably back in '03, when the property owners were working on putting together a custom lot subdivision, and then they, they worked through the process in '04 and '05, and, and then developed this project, and it was originally designed as a custom home subdivision. The improvements were put in, and then, as everybody knows, the, the market, their timing wasn't great. The market struggled. And then in the last several years, we'd had, we've had kind of a, what I would call a mini bubble, where we've had some good residential development, especially here in the town, as the Town of Gilbert has led permits for the valley. And there really hasn't been any interest in the, in the custom side of it. So the property owner began working to see what else could work here. What can we do so that this thing doesn't remain vacant? Because it's been vacant for going on 10 years. And it's a gorgeous, gorgeous development, gorgeous property. So as they began to work with different property owners, they look at two-story homes, they look at single-story homes and two-story homes, dividing the lots and making it smaller. They looked at ripping everything out and starting over again and doing smaller lots like are around in the area, the sixes that are around on, on all side, on the, the south and generally to the east and to the west. And that, that didn't make financial sense. So the, the plan that they came up with was what we came last year with, with the home builder, was to do single and two-story homes. And we divided the lots in half. The lots were, ended up generally about 84 and 85 feet wide by 221 feet deep, so that they're, they're still good, wide lots, but really, really, really deep. That home builder got nervous because there was a lot of competition when you get into the two-story homes with square footage. And they were nervous with what was going on in the area. So they backed out and, and went away. Ashton Woods, or Cahov came in and said, "You know what? I think we have a unique project or product that we can put in here that will work here." It's a single-story executive product with homes ranging in size from 3,200 square feet to 4,200, 4,300 square feet that's really designed and targeted and oriented towards the executive, the empty nester, who still wants a large square footage home and wants it in a nice community. And so they're looking to go after this niche. And so that's where, when we approached the town and said, "Listen, we can make something work. We have a product that's been designed. It's a 70-foot wide product. Here it is. We've got five different homes. Each have three different elevations. We can take this 70-foot wide product and put it here, but we're gonna need to request some deviations to your side yard setbacks to go to the 5 and 10s." And in working with staff, we seem to, to come to an agreement that this would work with an executive-type home. It would work because we would have such massive front yard setbacks, that I'll get to and show you on the exhibit, and massive rear yard setbacks. Here's an aerial that shows you what we came in with last year. So that's the plat. The lots range in size from 16.5 to 1,900 square feet. So they're really large lots. We're here to request deviation to the side yard setback. Now, it looks like a long list, but that's because each lot was already platted and improved and done. If I, if this was just a piece of property where I could erase numbers, you know, we could play with it, but these improvements are in, everything's done, and we had to try to make it work. And so that's why it looks like you have a laundry list of deviations, but really what it is, is one deviation as it applies to each individual lot. So we tried to make it work along that way. This next part, I'll ask you to be patient with me, because I got a new toy and I just wanted to use it. We took some video of the site so you can get to feel, because you can't go into this project because the gates are locked. And so I thought, let's take some video footage to see what's in the project. It is a really nice project with a lot of amenities. You can see the main common area in the center with the tennis court in the back. There's a fire pit and kind of a gathering, gathering area over there. The streets are in. The paving is very nicely done. It is a high-end, nice, nice project that has struggled for 10 years. It's been sitting there. The landscaping has, is struggling. I know the current property owner has done his best to try to keep it up and keep it maintained, but it's tough when nobody is, lives there and nobody's there on a regular basis. The lots you see are large lots. We just divide them in half, and they'll be really, really deep lots. The entrance, obviously, it's a gated community. The walls are all up. It will remain a gated community. The only people that are gonna be coming and going from this project are the 20 people who live in here and their friends and family. And so it's not something that's open to the public or that's integrated with other subdivisions throughout the town. Like I said, the cul-de-sacs and everything is very first-class. It is very nicely done, and we think this is gonna end up being a great, great project. So let's go to, we're asking, everybody knows what we're asking for with side yard setbacks. And so let's go over why we, why we merit these reductions in side yard setbacks. First off, this project's been around for 10 years. It's had an opportunity. We've had a mini bubble where there was a lot of absorption of lots in Gilbert, especially the closer ones like this project over the last two to three years, and there really was an absorption on this. There, there wasn't a whole lot of interest. People were nervous. You can get lots, land a lot cheaper, and without all the infrastructure costs and the improvement costs. All the nice things that are in here cost money. It costs somebody money. And so we're trying to economically use that and feasibly make this project work. The lots within this project are huge. They're 16,000 to 19,000 square feet. We have elevations that you've seen. We've submitted five different floor plans, each with three different elevations for the project. We have, we will notify the buyer. When somebody comes in, they'll know exactly what their setbacks are. So we think the 5 and 10 is really not an issue, because the people are coming in, as staff has pointed out in their staff report, they're knowing what they're getting, and they know what they're buying into, and they're building the home with the, the way it is. This project, we think, is viable financially because it's a very niche, niche market. To have that large, single-story executive-style home, if you take it and put it into a two-story home, that's a different market. That's starting to get into the family market, and where they want the square footage and, and they don't want that high-end type home. These homes are, you know, 700,000 square foot, or $700,000 homes, very high-end, very nice projects. Again, single-story floor, floor plan. As staff pointed out, it's not something that isn't already occurring in the area. All the developments around there have 5 and 10 side yard setbacks. They aren't as big a lots, and they're not as big and nice a homes, but they do have that. And I think most importantly, is we've worked extensively with your staff. We've worked with the neighbors. The neighbors support this. The staff supports this. The property owner supports this. We support this. And most importantly, Cahov wants to come in and do something with this and use this project and build on this, this project to get this thing off a high center. Staff showed you the elevations and how that's gonna lay out. It's gonna be very, very nice. Those are only four of the 15 different elevations that they're showing. Now, what I wanted to point out is, there's a lot of diversity with this architecture. As you can see here, each of these homes have recessed courtyards that are stepped way back from the garages that pop out here. There's usually a front entry garage and then a side entry garage with a courtyard in the center here that's stepped way back in. So you're not getting that with a lot of the 5 and 10 homes. It's like a shoebox on a lot. That is not what this is. The front elevations pop out substantially, you know, not 2, 3 feet, but 15 or 20 feet. They pop out, and, and you create that little courtyard in the front. You've got elevations with rear garages, where the garages are way, way, way pushed back. So you have that big, nice, long driveway that, that your grandkids can come and ride their big wheels on or whatever, so a nice area. The other thing I wanted to point out that Commissioner Member Sipple had brought up was the front yard setback. Yeah, I'm getting to the point where I'm thinking grandkids now, so...
I'm too young for grandkids.
We're all getting there. The setbacks are huge, and that's because the, the drainage for this project is primarily occurring in the fronts of the lots. The pla, the plaits that we've processed have drainage easements, so you can't scoot the homes up. The zoning allows 30 feet, but you can't, because there needs to be retention areas in the fronts of each home. So we've identified what these front setbacks are. Now, that says 30, but you can see it's a lot more, but it's, it's the way we measure with a corner lot. So, I mean, you're talking 50 feet to 75 feet to 50 feet for these massive front yard setbacks. So in a typical 5 and 10 subdivision, you'll have 20-foot, 18 to 20, 25-foot front yard setbacks. And so those homes are right up on the street, and so you can see it. Whereas here, you have two to three times the front yard setback that you would typically see with the 5 and 10s we've seen around the community before. It's set way, way back, and there's gonna be a lot of landscaping going into these homes in that front yard that will go in there. Some of the elevations we wanted to show you, that kind of pull, pull up and show you the courtyard. You know, you've got the courtyard here. You've got a garage here. You've got a side entry garage here. Again, with the courtyard here, the garage, and a side entry garage right here. Again, a rear garage with a side entry too, and then a courtyard in here. Again, another courtyard in here with a, a side entry garage here, and then a garage facing the street. This isn't, this is not a crackerjack project. This is 20 lots. We've got 15 different elevations. We think this is gonna turn out really, really nice. It's gonna be a high-end executive community. But I think the bottom line comes down to this property owner. They have worked for a long, long time on a gorgeous project to try to make something work. And we think we have found that niche to get this thing over the hurdle, to get this thing moving forward so it doesn't sit vacant for another 5, 10 years, that it can move forward. It'll be a nice project. There's gonna be, there's people already calling. I've had three people call me looking for homes in this project after we had the neighborhood meeting. There's interest. We think it will do well. It's, it's a small niche project here with only 20 lots, where it doesn't, you know, make it a lot of sense to treat it like other projects, where I have a 40 or 100-acre project. Because it's so small, it's a little niche, we think we can have the absorption to make this thing work with this high-end, single-story home. So with that, I would beg you, let this thing move forward. This is a good thing, good project. I've worked with multiple different people on this exact... I've worked with multiple different people on this exact property to try to make something work. This is something I think is, is, is probably the best project that I've seen that, that will move forward on this project that can make it work. So I beg of you, just, this is, this is a good project. Recommend approval, follow staff and the neighbors and, and the property owner, and we beg you to recommend approval of this. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm not quite sure how many times he said beg.
Can we get a count, Margot? On my knees, but I will beg, I will grovel.
I want the Boy Scout uniform.
Okay. Do we, do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay. I think you had a pretty good presentation, explained a lot of the issues that we had in our study session. So I guess, kind of discussing a little bit about an amendment that, that we had to this, talking about the front yard setbacks and how, and how it's worded, if you want to discuss that a little bit.
Chairman, I appreciate you bringing that up. I, I didn't bring that up. I passed out a sheet. What we're doing here this evening is amending an existing ordinance that, that was approved by this, this board or this commission and the council last year. And so you can see the different changes that we're making. Obviously, the first one is, we're substituting our plan. Let me go back to it. That one right there. We're substituting our plan for the one that you guys approved last year for, for a different builder. So that would be a, a change. Obviously, the table that staff put together that talked about the deviations, and then the last condition of approval, we don't want you to think we're pulling a bait and switch on you, where you had approved five and 10s, and then we moved the homes up to 20 to 30 feet from the, the front yard. We're not going to do that. The plat won't let us do that. But to provide some level of assurance, we've added that last condition of approval that we'll keep those setbacks as shown on this plan. Obviously, with some flexibility for staff, when you get into engineering issues, you may have to shift one way or another just to accommodate engineering issues. But we think that provides ample protection to make sure these homes are really far setback from the street as shown on this plan.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for applicant? Okay. Any additional comments from staff? Where Bob went? Oh, there you are.
No, sir.
Okay, great. All right, any? Oh, yeah, is anybody here from the public to, would like to speak on this matter? Oh, so come on forward and if, if you could fill out a green card when you're done and bring it to the.
I was actually here for a, a thing on the consent agenda, but I actually live across the street, so I wanted to sit in and just see how it is. But I just echo exactly what Mr. Lake says. We're very excited as neighbors for Cahov Nanyan to come in. I couldn't think of a better builder. So with the, they've been very open to all the neighbors, just letting us know what's happening. So we're just very excited for this project and just the homes that are coming in. We're just excited, so.
Great, thanks. Can you just state your name and?
Yeah, Ryan Willis. My address, 3297 East Juanita Avenue.
Great. Thanks for coming down. Okay. Not seen any other public comment. Close the public hearing, bring it back to the dice for conversation, discussion. Commissioner Caveney?
So coming into this, I think my only concerns were the side yard setbacks, and I appreciate your presentation, both staff and Mr. Lake. I think what, what has convinced me that this is probably okay is the, the quality of the product. I think the, the fact that it is kind of a fixed product by the builder, and, and I recognize there's not a lot of flexibility in changing that product at this point. I think, given the front and rear side, rear yard setbacks being so large, some of that side yard minimization could be lost with landscaping and other things that will somewhat conceal some of those tight connections. So I think overall, given, given the history of this product, project, and the quality of the product that is being proposed, I think I can support these 10 and 5, roughly 10 and 5 side yard setbacks being proposed, so.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Commissioner Whitman?
Chairman, I'd just like to echo Commissioner Caveney's comments, and also add that, given the fact that this is, I, I like to call it or refer to this product or project as kind of an infill piece, even though it truly isn't an infill. It's, but based on the fact that the perimeter walls and a lot of the infrastructure is already in this site, I think, and it's gone dormant for 10 years or more, I think that it calls for a little bit more flexibility in trying to get somebody in. And I think the product that's been presented to us this time far exceeds the product that we received the last time. Not that the last time wasn't bad, but I think that that is a good trade-off for the request that's before us tonight. So for those reasons, I would recommend approval.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Bloomfield?
I'd like to echo the, the comments from before, and, and I'm grateful that you found a builder that had a product that would fit on this as it was platted with just what I consider to be minor setback changes that are all very doable within the neighborhood and what's going on. And I applaud the efforts of the developer to continue trying to find a product that would fit in here and it would work, and I want to make it happen, so I'm, I'm all in favor.
Thanks. Commissioner Mudi?
Yeah, I fully support it, and I just think that the drone presentation has set a new bar for, for this group.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Sybil?
Yeah. Mr. Lake, thank you for doing the presentation. And, you know, I was very concerned about the side setbacks, just given the, the sheer size of the homes, right? I mean, you've got these big, gorgeous, beautiful homes, and the reality is, there is a, a good amount of property, the front and back of it, and you're going to get a specific buyer in here that's going to be able to really work the side yards to probably be nicer than some of our 10s and 10s that are out there. So I do appreciate the presentation. I do agree, the drone, someone got a new toy, so. You can tell, you got over the gate when no one else could. But, so very nice, it's a beautiful project, I am in support of it. So thank you for making the presentation.
Great, thanks.
Chairman, may I make a motion?
Oh, you don't want me to speak? But that's all right. That's all right. I, I'm in favor of the, and I really appreciate the presentation. It really explains a lot about the project and the history and how it brought us to this point in time, and the product that we see here in front of us looks like it'll be a great addition to the town of Gilbert. So with that, move, with your motion.
Chairman, I, I move that we approve, I really just need to read it, huh? Yeah. Approve item eight, case Z14-27, the enclave of Viabella, with the amended side yard setbacks, and a move that we approve it, as shown, and as stipulated in the, in the provided document, so.
And the staff?
The staff report.
Okay.
Second?
Second, so I have a motion by Commissioner Bloomfield, a second by Commissioner Whitman. All in favor? Any opposed? So that passes 7-0. That brings us to administrative items. Any discussion on the minutes or a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Your Honor, I move to approve the study session, a regular session, meeting minutes of February 4, 2015.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by Vice Chairman Sybil, a second by Commissioner Whitman. All in favor? Any opposed? Passes 7-0.
Mr. Chair, actually, it was 5-0. Two members were not present at the last session.
Okay, passes 5-0. Thank you. That brings us to communications. Report from chairman and members of the commission on current events. Anybody have any items to bring forward? Since I was so brought to, I don't even know why I was brought to your last commission. There was, there was a lot of, a lot of work that we put together, but there was a few items that, the town, I'm proud of our town, the awards that we have received in the last year. So kind of going from highest to lowest, but not, nothing in favor of any other, is 22nd best place to live in the United States. That, that's pretty big to me, because knowing how many, how many towns and cities that we have, even in our own state, and we're 22nd in the nation. And then we have awards for the third best city to find a job, and I think that's a lot of our work as a town, bringing, able to bring projects and working with our community to, to find work for our citizens. And the second safest city to live in, and the best city for working parents, which is me. So I appreciate the town, so, and great that we have a place where we all can come together. That brings us to a report from Council of Liza.
Good evening, planning commissioners. You did a great job this evening. Thank you for being so conscientious with the projects that are brought forward. I will add one more award to what the chairman just mentioned. We had another one added today, which is one of the top 10 best places to work in America. We just received that today, so I wanted to make sure that I shared that with you. Then a couple other things that I wanted to share were, last Thursday afternoon, we broke ground on a 100-room hotel at Higley and Inverness, right across the street from Banner Gateway and MD Anderson. And the owner of the property was very adamant when he spoke about the great service that he received from the town and the planning department and economic development, and working with Mayor Lewis on that project. And Nathan's gone this evening, but Nathan Williams got to attend, because he was the planner on the project, and he got to actually shovel the dirt and break the ground, so it was a pretty big event for him. And I was very happy to be there to, to witness that, because he had such a great time doing it. And then that same afternoon, we had a ribbon cutting at St. Xavier University and their office, which is down in the same building that the Gilbert Chamber is in. And so they are now currently recruiting for students for that campus to open in August of this year. So if you know anybody that's interested, they are there and ready to meet you. We met with the vice provost on Friday after that ribbon cutting on Thursday, and she's a very nice lady and very anxious to be here and work here in Gilbert. And for a fun item, the Gilbert Parks and Recs Department has started their concerts in the park for the spring, and there will be one on Thursday, March 19th, and they're now holding those at Water Tower Park. So they're held down, under the water tower in downtown Gilbert, and I think it's a great opportunity for families to go down and get together and do something free and fun. And I will add to that, the Gilbert Farmers Market is held across the street in the parking ride on Saturday mornings. Well, now, the Gilbert Food Court will be moving to that same location on Friday evenings. So you'll have the Gilbert Food Court on Friday evenings in the parking ride, and then you'll have the Gilbert Farmers Market on Saturday in the parking ride. So that's a great opportunity for people to be downtown and milling around and trying all the restaurants. I went to Lolo's Chicken and Waffles last Friday, and I highly recommend it, so. Thank you for all you do.
Great, thank you. Brings us to a report from Planning Service Manager on current events.
Good evening, commissioners, and I don't have any other updates to share with you, but we want to echo our thanks for all your efforts to guide, to guide our growth in Gilbert.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to meeting adjourned.